Is this the building permit?
No, we haven't touched that. That came in the mail.
Oh.
Along with this, we haven't really done it.
So we don't have a permit? Is this even out?
And the other gentleman hasn't come in on the Salem Street, the change probably.
Alright, so where?
Alright, we're back on the record. Let the record show the full board's seat.
Okay. And I see Joe, and I'm sorry, I don't know you.
Kathy Franzen, from the zoning board.
Okay, Kathy, are you new on the zoning board?
Relatively, yeah. Like last summer, yeah.
Okay, okay. And so, bring me up to speed on this, and I'm sorry for being tardy on that. So we're here to discuss the whole zoning bylaw.
Where we are with the zoning bylaw.
Yeah. Now, has your board been a... How many members of your board are for more than a year?
Three, of the five.
Okay, how many more than three years?
Two.
Five years.
Two.
Two, okay, so we got two. Did they, were they aware of the zoning bylaw rewrite?
I believe so.
Okay.
I'm not really sure, because it doesn't seem like they are, because when we've talked about it, they don't, they know that they want to make changes, but nobody seems to know where to go with it. So that's why we talked to Joe about it, and Joe suggested that we all get together. That was the idea. So beyond that, I don't really know an awful lot, let's put it that way.
So do you know how the zoning bylaw rewrite starts?
It has to go to town meeting and all that, right? Once we all agree what we think it should be, correct?
No. You're close. You're close about the town meeting. The zoning bylaw, Jim had the case over there, was just to give you a little history, because Joe maybe not knows history either. What was it, nineteen?
Sixty-five?
No, that was the zoning law.
It was the final draft was on January twelve.
No, the case law.
Oh, the case.
Nineteen seventy.
Oh, that's, that's, what was that, eighty-nine?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Eagle builders.
The zoning bylaw hadn't been updated since I think the last thing was Kenny Hamilton in the seventies. Okay, so...
No, it was, it was, it was kept being updated through the early days.
Right, but that was the old black book.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, and then we went to the rewrites, onto that. So anyway, in the nineties, there was one of the things that zoning map behind you, that took seven years to update, and thank goodness for Jim, or we still would be looking for that point on Main Street in somebody's backyard. I don't know if you remember that, behind the boulder. So the zoning bylaw, we pitched the town to be rewritten, and we got a budget to do it, to overhaul it. And it was supposed to have been done because of that case law in the eighties that never got done. Okay, so we started into it. It is tasked by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to the planning board to write, rewrite the entire zoning bylaws. ZBA can, and all the other boards put input into it, but because you're going to be governing by it and hearing the appeals on it, I guess the state zapped it to us. Well, your previous board took complete insult to the fact that the zoning board of appeals wasn't rewriting the zoning bylaw. And we sabered for about three years on that to try to convince them it wasn't our idea. We're mandated by the state. It's in the state law, you know, mass general law. So we got into this problem where we started rewriting it, and no matter what we did, it went, you know, they complained, and they complained to the selectmen, and the selectmen appointed the zoning board, and we got into this battle. And at the end, we had a piece that the draft is, which Jim just announced the date on it, okay? And then we asked for input through all the boards, and because they were upset, it went nowhere. So we spent an awful lot of money doing this, okay? And now, some other things have come out. Jim has spent probably hundreds of hours by now eyeballing this thing to go through. So the mission going forward is to get this thing into, and it's not going to be possible by this town meeting, that's for sure. We have to get a draft redone, and we got to get everybody on board, all the inputs, all the hearings, and then get a document ready for town meeting, which is going to be extremely complex to explain to a hundred people at town meeting, to pass it with a two-thirds majority vote.
Right.
So, all the boards have to be on board when we submit it, to make it happen. So Joe's been instrumental in then to getting a couple things. The master plan had a similar fate. We completed it, we submitted it, it went through, the ZBA opposed it, the selectmen opposed it, a hundred and thirty thousand dollar document ready to go, and Andrea's now picking it up to get it pushing through. Although all the stuff in it was done very well, and a lot of it has been completed by the town, the master plan last done was in the sixties, and so the new one never went through and got accepted so that we could update it. And although we've tried seven times at town meeting, I think, right? Seven or eight?
Right.
So...
The main thing is that Lisa Maed, who worked for the zoning, and also Mark Bobowski, who rewrote everything for the state, worked for the zoning and us, and Woody Cammott, the engineer. So it is, it does have input from the zoning board at that time and us. The main thing is that we want to work together with you people and to update it. And it's already in existence, you just need to go through it and change things. It's like a living document, it can be changed and everything.
Good.
And fine tune it, and then let's get it passed. That's our main offer.
Well, I went through, you talked about the master plan.
The zoning bylaws too.
The zoning bylaws.
That's what I'm talking about.
When he started the article, he wanted more than that.
It almost sounds simple. I mean, so much work has been done, it's just that people, we never got to that point where we pushed a button and it happened.
Right.
We did the work, and then we didn't get along, and to make, to implement. And I'm not, I don't know the history behind that. Quite frankly, it doesn't matter. Going forward needs to be different.
Walter was talking about the case, a gentleman had to open up a woodworking company place in downtown, in the business zone. And there was a business there prior, and the town...
June twenty-ten.
The town denied him. The board of appeals denied him. They took it to court, and they ultimately won. Not the town, it's the applicant. So, and then the judge, in her decision said, "I strongly recommend that town of Roland change their zoning bylaw."
I got old four.
You got old four?
Old four.
I got a twenty-ten.
Need to have permitted, also, we need to have permitted uses in each district. And we don't.
Well, it's funny, because I think I told Joe, when I joined zoning board, I, you know, I've, I've looked at zoning bylaw for all different towns, and so I came here and I said, "Okay, well, let me look through this." And my first response was, "Well, where's the rest of it?"
Where's mine at at home?
Because there's no permitted uses, there's no nothing. So that's the real problem, is that everyone comes to zoning board if they want to do anything. Which is, we're supposed to be a zoning board of appeals, not a zoning board of dictation. But that's my opinion.
And that's what Walter started off the meeting, that's what he was talking about, is that case.
Yeah.
Well...
That's what made them start a work of any kind.
One is enough.
Yeah, because, you know, like accountant, accountant or a doctor wants to move into a zone, a zone business, that's still has to go get a special permit.
And pay six hundred and fifty dollars for the privilege.
Well, you can reduce the fee anytime you want.
Which we just did, yeah. But up until two meetings ago, that's what was happening.
We're not talking about, yeah, we're talking about the permitted uses, there isn't any.
Right, there aren't any. That's the real problem.
Well, we know that through the eighty-nine season.
But that's why I hate it.
But basically, what's in your hands right now is...
Right.
It's, it was, we added things to this, and we basically used some industry lists to go through and basically come up with, you know, what we could permit, you know, what we would still have to have appeals boards, you know, special permits or whatever. We're not completely done with, I mean, every time I turn around, I find a few more businesses in the town.
And the world is changing every day.
I'd rather put what we have in this thing.
Yeah.
Now, when I got ahold of Georgetown, Georgetown, it's pretty simple, but the problem I found with it is when you really look into it, and one of the things that we want to do is we want to have multiple business slash commercial zones and multiple industrial slash industrial zones. They do. It's a good idea to do that, because we got different lot sizes. And, you know, what might fit on one lot won't fit on another lot. So... The other thing that they, they do have down in Georgetown is a tremendous amount of shopping centers with big parking lots. We have a tendency to have a standalone business with a few spaces.
Right.
Where if we do have some little shopping centers, probably the worst one is Nicole's. I mean, try to get in there sometimes.
Three entrances and a gas station right in the middle of it.
Right, right, and it's, you know, some work real well, though if you go down where Kay's used to be, no problems at all there.
Right, plenty of parking.
Plenty of parking. That's, that's what you really need. But yet, when you go into Georgetown, take a look at the parking they have in all those places. And there's five different shopping centers.
True.
They're all not together type buildings, but there's enough of them. Right off the square, there's really not much parking in the square anymore. They have to go behind the buildings or off.
Right.
You know, but they, they do have spaces. So there's a difference there. You, you can't just slash copy it, it just, it won't work here. We have a lot of different stuff they don't have. They have stuff we don't have.
Right.
But, you know, as I keep looking around, down here, this little building right off the square, has a print shop. It's been there a number of years. I didn't put that in there. So that's another one going in there. We used to have a drugstore. You know, and we could do one. Where was that? Right, right in the square where that's a multi-state mortgage company.
Right in the end?
Yeah, that was the drugstore for years.
Where did that go?
Oh, God, probably...
They were in there until the eighties, I think.
Yeah, that was, that was there a while. And, I mean, we used to, believe it or not, had a Swedish restaurant in the square, where the sum shop is.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
How many parking spots did Thelma Regan have down on Main Street in the nineteen...
Oh, God, yeah, I mean, that Thelma Regan, I mean, that was, that's another one of those, you know, it was a business, but it was in a residential zone. It was there prior to zoning.
And that was prior to the current bylaws.
Yeah, so it's nonconforming, pre-existing nonconforming. And that was there for a long time until it finally went out completely, you know?
So what's the...
One of my best friends owns a house now, losing it.
What's the, what's preventing us from implementing something like this at this moment? And I realize it's a process, but for the public's education.
I was going back and forth with town council. I didn't personally talk to town council, but what we had to do was we had to delete, like, section three hundred, eight hundred, eight fifty, nine hundred. And then we had to, because there's certain things in those sections that you can't do without, such as the, you know, the lots and everything, lot sizes, that I had to come back in and then say, "Okay, we're gonna have to replace it with a thing known as dimensional requirements and procedures." There were some actual bylaws written within it, that I hope are in this somewhere. And it's, it got to the point where, when you start to write an article that, like that, and he wanted a lot more, when you put that on the floor, let me tell you, you're not going to get a two-thirds positive vote, because you're probably not even going to get fifty percent. They're just going to go, "What the hell are you doing?" So that's out the window.
So what's, what's your experience with zoning? I mean, you obviously picked up on the permitted uses right away, so what, I mean, you get a background in?
Well, I, I deal with, you know, real estate appraisals all the time, you know, so we're constantly looking at zoning and different things, and I work for a developer, you know.
Oh, so you're in it.
Yeah, so, so that's why when I went to go look at it, I said, "Well, this is missing, this is missing." The dimensions could easily be put on a table of some sort, you know, so you could make it easier for people to follow.
They are.
Because, yeah, good, because that's confusing, I think, for people when they come in. Some of the zoning bylaws contradict each other, and they're too vague, and then we have people fighting about it, and so that kind of, you know, it's like the in-law, there was a big argument about having two buildings on one parcel. Could one be an in-law, did it have to be attached, not attached? So there's some ambiguity, I guess, would I, would be my experience of what I've seen. It seems like some of the people who come in there, it's unnecessary.
Kathy's an attorney, I believe.
Then it would be permitted, and you wouldn't have to come in front of anybody. You could just be a doctor in a doctor's office.
That's exactly what we were trying to do.
That's what we were doing.
Right, and there's a lot of people on the board now who are in agreement that that's the way it should be.
Hallelujah, because it wasn't the way for a long time. Good job, selectmen.
It has changed tremendously, I would say, even since the summer.
Good. Because that was our biggest thing. There's a lot of buy right uses. If you've got a barber shop, and someone goes out and it turns into a hair salon, they shouldn't be going in to see you. They should be going to the town clerk, pay the fee to re-register the business, five hundred dollars to the town or whatever that fee is, okay? And that's it.
We just did that. Two meetings ago, we voted for that type of change, so that if, let's say, we were, we were using the pizza shop, remember in the ice cream shop as the example?
Yeah, damn it my heart, because I worked in pizza shops.
But if you have a pizza shop, and you decide you want to sell, and you want to pick it up, and you want to buy it, and it's the same exact business, then why are you coming to zoning? You should go to town. So now that's the plan, that they go to the town clerk, they say, "We're changing it."
One person's interpretation of that, and that was all.
So what would have happened in that case is that the first person who came along had to get a list of requirements.
Right.
So then that person now sells to you, okay, so you sell to him. Now you get a list from the town clerk that says, "These are your limitations, this is, these are the hours you can work."
Transfer of ownership.
Transfer of ownership, twenty-five bucks. There you go. Done.
And the burden to comply, of course, is going to be on the new owner.
Of course. And if they don't comply, then you have the zoning enforcement officer to deal with that, if that's the issue. That's the plan.
Twenty-five bucks, that's, that's life nowadays, so...
Well, it was six hundred and fifty dollars for them to come and say, "We want to be a new pizza place." It was crazy.
That's all we need to charge, period.
No, not that I want to rack up fees for the town of Roland, but...
I think the twenty-five dollars was intended to cover the clerical costs, to send out the new information to the new owner, that kind of thing. I think that's really, it was a nominal fee to cover administrative costs.
That's one thing I learned, when I went to a couple of meetings, the last one was that the fees are absolutely all cost. It's just to advertise, and the clerk, and the filing, and it's not a revenue source for the town.
No, no, it shouldn't be a revenue source, but, you know, it should be all clerical and to produce the documents. But there also should be an inspection fee tagged with that. For instance, I'll tell you what other cities do it, and PB is one of them. So you go in, you do the changeover, and it's a like business, but then they just go in and do the annual inspections that you were talking about, okay? And they'll just go in and do, okay, you got smoke detectors, you got fire extinguishers, you got your exit lights, and that's it. And it's a quick thing. But that transfer covers that fee.
Oh, I see.
You know what I mean, to go in. Is it not the right to know, officer, the, what's that of a position?
What's supposed to be done, I'm on the board of health and, or health agent, but the paint shops and automobile repair shops and everything, there's EPA, DEP, and OTA regulations, and they're not being followed. Normally, the fire chief is supposed to be doing this, but he wasn't getting paid. There was no money. I had suggested five or seven years ago to include that in a fee when all new businesses go through the zoning board, to get a fee for inspections, to follow through on this, because you can't depend on the state. The state, on two different operations in town that I had to mandate, there were twelve major violations in these paint shops that they weren't following. And we made them follow them now. But there's no one following up, inspecting it once or twice a year, because there's no money there to pay the person to do it.
But what's the title of that position? It's not right to know, officer, it's what?
Yeah, it was a right to know, officer.
But there was another title that, that we came up with for that, what the state had.
I don't remember what you was.
Yeah, so, but that's what we're talking about. You get a buy right use, okay, it's, it's kind of like one-stop shopping. You go in, okay, pizza, pizza, Joe's, Sally's, okay? Five hundred bucks to the town, all your paperwork, all your limitations, all your new certificates reprinted, okay? Give yourself a week, call the fire chief when he goes in. Call whoever else has to go in and take a look at this stuff, the board of health agent to make sure, you know, bathrooms are clean and you got napkins on the table. Well, whatever it is that they have to do. But it's, it's done, and you don't spend six months in your office.
Right, and plus the thirty-four day wait.
Well, that's, that's what exactly we've done, because, so now, if you saw your pizza place, now you have to wait thirty-four days before you can open. It's absurd.
Yeah, no, ridiculous.
That's a mute question.
Right, I agree.
That was one person's interpretation, and he was able to sell that to others. And that should never happen. That's, that's a mute question.
Now, you can waive, within your own board, you can waive the application as being unnecessary until, and put a temporary, like you said, you already voted in a temporary procedure.
Right.
Right, so when somebody comes in, now the, the trick to that is to get that advertised through the selectman's office, Nancy posted on the website, so somebody's got it. And then the clerk, you know, in a big poster. If you've got a business and it's, you know, this is what the, you're going to be doing now. But it should include just, you know, if I own a business, and I, and I just transferred and all that stuff, I want to be done. You know, I want to make sure everything's up to speed. I don't want the fire chief walking in four months later and find out that I was supposed to add something that I didn't know before I opened, you know? So I, I think that should be included in it. Other places have quarterly inspections, or at least twice a year, or just annual inspections, just doing that. We don't have that here in town. And who was it that had a recent fire that... Chesterton. Wasn't it a couple of years ago, something happened over there?
I don't think that ever gets a fire.
You know, something happened over there, and they had, they do regular inspections and stuff, but I guess the town wasn't going in there. So fortunately, you know, nothing happened, but it was just an example to bring up, you know, what, what if? So I know...
A lot of businesses should be getting a lot of these types of inspections to their insurance companies, too. In fact, I just went through a big one, where they just went through every single property, they want to know every single fire extinguisher, what the date was, was it done, signs, the whole thing, they should be going through.
But they don't pass that on to the town.
Yeah, true. But people should know, they should be aware. Hey, your fire extinguisher is expired, or whatever. But you're right, the town should be doing it.
The fire chief should be going, Joe's Pizza, okay. Harry's Liquor Store, not so okay. You know, you know, places to watch and go back and recheck, you know, if it's necessary, you know. You know, this is all reasonable.
Right, there's fire prevention, which is what other towns have, is a fire prevention service, and that's what they do.
They do it partially here with, you have a liquor license and you hold a lot of people, then you get inspected by the fire chief and the building inspector.
Yeah.
Yearly. And they check the exit signs.
You know, just regular, normal stuff.
So the process is that this board has the authority mandated by the state to review zoning and/or possibly make changes.
No, rewrite.
Excuse me, rewrite.
Complete rewrite, yeah.
And then once you get, part of that process, is it a courtesy or a requirement that you get sign off from the boards? Is it, is it...
No, it's a courtesy. The mandate, you want to have every board on board. I mean, we did the same thing with the subdivision regs. You may not know it, but in chapter three of the subdivision control regs, every single board is supposed to sign off on a subdivision and put their input in. And there's a whole list of all the departments, selectmen too, on schools, capacity, everything. There's a whole list of what your board is supposed to be reviewing, zoning's in there too.
So are you guys on pace to deliver a document in, at town meeting twenty-fifteen?
Well, this was the document that's been sitting ready since oh-nine, looking at this date in twenty-ten. Because there were inputs, the ZB, current ZB, correction, past ZBA requested a revision color coding to, you know, where did it go in the new book. So that was done at great expense, I might add. I think it was cost, that was like eight thousand dollars to go back through and redo that. And so that was done, delivered to all the boards, looked just like this, okay?
And you got pushback.
And then we got pushback from everybody. Everybody, from the selectmen. Unfortunately, the selectmen appoint the ZBA.
Yeah.
So you've been kind of steering this ship in the, in boards of past, and so we, and we got pushback from your board. You know, completely different setup.
What was some of the rationale for the pushback?
Um, because the ZBA felt they should be writing zoning.
Okay, so it's a power and control issue, not a...
Yeah.
One, one thing.
Is that a fair assessment?
Hold on. I don't want to dwell on the past. It looks, it looks like with the new members on the zoning board, they want to work with us, we want to work with you, to the benefit of the town, to get this passed. And so we need to get the document that I just now got loaded on my computer, I'll try to get it to your board.
Yes, that'd be great.
What we need to work on tonight is to set up a rapport with your board and get an agenda set up to talk about things. After you people reread it and want to change things, fine. We need to work together and not dwell on the, on the zoning bylaws.
The entire zoning bylaw.
Yes, okay. Well, I emailed you that you didn't look at yet.
Like a box.
What, what, what needs to be looked at is, is to make sure, and we're not sure what she did or did not do. This is the gallery wrote this thing, okay? We need to take the old bylaw, check it through the new bylaw. The sections go over that need to go over, okay? If that's a yes, okay, then we got to look at, what's the new section she put in? Is that okay? If that's okay, then, and everybody, we're on board with it. We use part of this zoning bylaw, not all of it.
Yeah.
The zoning board uses the most of it. In some towns, you will find that the planning board may have more to do with doing business decisions and industrial decisions than does the zoning board.
Right.
Because the zoning board, basically, if you look at it, is there for variances, okay, and problems coming back.
Right.
Okay, they're an appeals board. The reality is, and when you do make a decision, you wish there was special permit, who's the appeals board?
Well, I think the ZBA has become the primary issuing authority.
Well, that's the issue, is that I, I agree. I see the zoning board as an appeals board, so as a judicious board. This is what the law says, this is what we need to enforce, as opposed to, well, we don't like you, so we're going to say no to you, but you, you're nice, we'll say yes to you. It's not like that. It should be very judicious. It's, it's in there, it's in there, it's not, it's not. Period.
Very good.
One of the other...
I'm pretty simple, like, very flat point.
I had heard for a number of years, is we do a site plan, and, but the site plan comes at the end. You've already issued your decree. And what some of the zoning board members at the time were saying, that should be done first.
Yeah.
So they got something to look at to say, "Okay, here's your building, okay, here's all your parking spaces and everything." So they understand what is going on, maybe even a thumbs up from the planning board prior to it.
That would be helpful, because people come in with sketches that they did at home, like crayons, like this is, it's like, how am I supposed to...
Arrowhead Lane.
So how am I supposed to, you know, really look at that? And, you know, so I would like somebody who has more...
Only official if they're written on the back of a napkin.
I'm sorry.
Only on the back of a napkin.
Yeah.
I can't tell you, Arrowhead Lane actually came in on the paper towel, the first time. But anyway, one of the things that we toyed with that worked on several, several occasions is that because there was a doubt on the special permit granting authority, and because it required engineering and site review, it came in here first. And I think that worked very well for a couple of reasons for the ZBA. One, all the expertise for, for planning, engineering, and all that stuff was right here. Okay, then, we gave them the full blessing, okay, and then your board basically said, "Okay, that was pretty thorough review, we're good to go."
Right.
Okay, and if they needed your input on that. And that seemed to work. And that's where Jim and I and the rest of this board have been racking our brains on this special permit granting authority, because you don't want to step on anybody's toes, but you got to look where the expertise is. Do you guys really want to go through these plans that we do every single day? You know, in and out, and we love this stuff. I mean, that's what we do. But we don't want to monkey in with your stuff.
Right.
Because, you know...
I, I'm not an engineer, none of us are. There's one engineer on the board.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's not what we're there for, I, in my opinion.
Right.
It should be here, where the expertise is.
So that's, that's what, this graph, and that's exactly what, what all of us were doing in there. And there are things, but yeah, the ZBA should be exactly what the A stands for, an appeal for, you know? And I applaud you with your, the way that you see things, black and white, as this board does with the reg. If it meets the reg, it flies. I don't care if it's a greenhouse or a bluehouse. If it's a house and it meets the dimensions and what we require, then it goes.
Right.
We, we had actually, at one point, took a hard look at, maybe there's some of this stuff we should be doing. And we did reset it, that it would be special permit dash planning.
Yeah.
But, you know, taking it away from the appeals board. Then we decided, no, let's go back, give them everything like they had. Let them tell us what they don't want. So we'll leave that to your judgment, okay? Now, site plan review, as as long as that comes first, and that's the drawing. And that should be a good drawing, not just on a piece of paper. And that's also the drawing that could go in through the computer program that the conservation guy came in and told us about. This, if you look at a lot of the business lines, we don't have anything on them at all.
Right, right, yeah.
We have nothing.
You know what also worked is because if if planning was the special permit granting authority and it's the longest running, as you know, in Massachusetts for the timeline. Part of that we put on pause, and during the process of us doing the special permit, we would send them back in for your approval, then they come back in. And so as part of our decision would indicate that they would need a sign off from ZBA. So so it was all put into the special permit at the same time, and there was no delay on the project. So they didn't have to get our approval, which took ninety days, hundred twenty days, and then go back into you and run in a whole operation, it was simultaneous. So that worked out very well when we started, you you know, doing some of this, um, and putting it in, and we weren't, nobody pulled anybody's authority away. We we, if you look at the subdivision control law, every board has to sign off.
I agree, my own personal opinion, now I can't speak for the whole board, but I agree that the two boards should work together and decide whether it's right or not, you know, I I agree with that. I I don't think that we should be working in our own little silo, that's what I I, that's what bothers me.
Right, and that was, Joe, that was part of what that whole building permit sign off sheet was. That whole fiasco at town meeting, when that got pulled by Bill Dark. Okay, that was in place for seven years, okay, and then there was that house problem where somebody decided last minute and pulled it and said that, you know, council said that it wasn't, there was a word in there that was missing, but town council wrote it. So they contradicted their own bylaw, cuz that went through a couple of times. But that safety net was in place for seven years to prevent swimming pools from going in, the whole Stone Bridge operation never would have happened. Okay, had that been put in place.
There were problems.
So huge problems, we have illegal houses in town.
Yeah.
You know, because the planning board, you know, wasn't involved, who was that, Seven Star Road, the guy with the house up there with doesn't even have access? Yeah, and yet the house was allowed to go up and we were, and we learned about it when this framing goes up, we're like, what, what house, that's not even a building.
Yeah, there's a very little communication between the two boards, I thought these two boards should be really, you guys should be joined at the head.
Well, but that's where the The other safety net was the building permit sign off.
Right.
Okay, I mean, just for normal stuff, so every board had to sign off. So you would look at this and go, where's your plan? No, that napkin's not gonna do it, you know, you need one of these on an A and R, and so we would catch a lot of things. And not that we were holding anybody up, I can't tell you how many times that we had preexisting nonconforming stuff. And we would tell them, just go get a plan, put it on the plan, okay, and put all the detail on. We'll sign it off as an A and R, and then that protects you against the zoning change for the next three years.
So are you gonna bring that back?
The selectmen under Bill Dark said that they would bring it up and reset, submit it the next day to town council after that town meeting vote. What was that, four years ago, five? So it's back in the selectmen's hands, okay, cuz they pulled it. And then there was that whole illegal posting thing that went along with it, that I mean, there was a big fiasco with that. So, um, it should be back, it was in the bylaws for a long time. Um, and it's, you know, building is is just starting to kick up again. So that's gonna be a problem, I think we should put that back in place, and again, it wasn't to hold anybody up, it was actually to help them. Because we had these houses get six months down the line. You know, after they start framing or starting to move in, and nobody could sign off in OC because there was a house on an illegal lot.
What I would recommend is that you make a formal request of that too.
We did.
Do it again.
We, well, I don't know, I mean, well, let's do it again, okay? Um, we're doing that, but do you, we printed enough of these.
When did you do it last?
It was done on town meeting floor. I don't know who was filming, it said that we would immediately send this back out for a rewrite, and it would be put back on for the next town meeting to be voted in. So everybody said, okay, we'll pull it, so it got, you know, voted out. Bill Dark said he would do it personally and uh submitted to town council, and it dropped.
If you'd like to make a request formally to Nancy to this board, it would be something that, you know, could be looked at if if if.
Well, it should have already been back in place.
But like Bob said, we can't go backwards now.
No, no, so all Nancy has to do is relook at that town meeting and go, oh yeah, let's resubmit it, cuz the request has already been in.
You could probably take something like that to a special town meeting in a sense, but
Yeah.
I i- in one respect, I mean, I, anything that's zoning whatsoever at all. I do like to do it in annual town meetings where you get a broader group of people. You know, you you get some good comments, you know, rather than fling it.
Yeah.
It's, um, I mean, right now, what's in front of us is to
Check.
One bylaw against the other bylaw. And right now, I seem to be the only one working on this. Probably, how do we go about making copies of this, Wally?
Well, that's the old one, this is the one that's updated like this with this. That's what I'm just looking at here, this is actually a later version.
To you and email you again, the most current one from Lisa May, the attorney.
What what date did you, is on that one?
It's newer than that, I didn't memorize the date. But we'll get it to you and also all the zoning board members, and then we can decipher it.
Yeah, we have a meeting, I think, next, the next week.
Well, I think, I think where I'm coming from is, I mean, I can check checks. But there's gonna be questions on this thing. So zoning board is gonna have
In the last page.
Right, no, I was just saying, meeting next week, I can approach it, say, this is what we found, you know, this, you know, that we discussed the deal.
To have this ready to go next January.
Charlie, three point six.
A glut of applications up to the middle of April sometime? Is that correct?
It's a big one.
I'm not even sure, to be honest. I haven't gotten the most recent, I know, we had, I don't know, four the last night, it was a pretty busy meeting.
Yeah.
I, you know, I don't know what they're using right now. We developed templates for just about anything and everything. And it was, it was basically, you ask some questions and everything, fill in the answer. We can print that thing out the next day and issue it. So it's it's like, you may wanna, and I don't know, I don't have it anymore, I had it on my computer at work. I think I deleted that a few years ago, actually, when we changed computers, cuz it was not on the hard drive. It was on, well, it wasn't on the C drive, but it was over.
Right.
It was on my hard drive, which goes complete.
So I lost. Talking about Jim. What did, what'd you have?
I, we had, when Nancy was on the board
Yeah.
We created templates for just about anything and everything.
I was on the board then.
And 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 the the problem is, all that's lost now, I don't think Nancy has it either. But it it was a, it was a way to cut through things. Because you can't create one template for everything, it just doesn't go.
Right.
But that's something, if you've issued, if they, if issued decisions before. Maybe wanna get those types of decisions. See if the gal who I call that up has something like that. So you've got something that you can then use prior to making the decision. You know what you asked before, it's all right in front of you.
I agree with that, I've noticed there's a, some lack of that, agree, you know, continuity.
Cuz it's, and you know, even beforehand, when somebody comes in for a certain permit. They can pick up something like that, so they know the questions you're gonna ask.
Yeah.
They could actually put it in their application.
Well, this, we just were redoing the application right now, cuz the way it was, it doesn't make any sense. The other thing is that I, what I'm gonna push for is it's not online, it should be online. We're in two thousand what, and it's not online. People don't know, they have to come find the town clerk, and then, I understand you need to get your signatures, you need to come here, but you should be able to read it online. Figure out what you need to do before you even come in here. But, but I agree, that's but, that's part of the long term plan that I I foresee.
Oh, it ain't gonna happen overnight, I mean.
No, it won't.
I wish I had, and I'd turn it over to you.
Yeah, no, that would be helpful, but that's all right.
I think you probably have a pretty good idea if you go back to the prior decisions. What was really necessary to ask.
Do you have a new application, when's that's coming, when is that coming out?
Well, we've been talking about the last few meetings, so everyone has a copy of it, and so we're all kind of gathering up, yeah.
Good, that's awesome.
We were planning to talk about it after the last meeting, but it was so long, finally, we just didn't forget it.
Does it have a multi-board sign off component to it or?
Well, it needs to be signed by, you know, the town clerk, the building inspector, and the assessors office.
Okay.
So that's how the current one works.
So as I see it, the next step should be getting the most recent whole zoning bylaws to all members.
Yep.
And then we need to set up a date to meet together, not just one, but all of us, both boards. And then decipher what we wanna do with that, changes and whatever, so that's what we need to do. It's almost useless to try to just talk to one member.
No, but I can pass along the message, you know, and talk to people.
You need to physically have that.
They could make thirteen, week after the election.
Yeah.
As soon as I, as soon as I have the newest one, I'll disseminate it for when everybody in will.
And email me your address, and then I'll try different ways of sending it to my board. To meet the MAC people and the IBM people.
That's great.
Jim, did you wanna go over the uh, the clerk issue while Joe's here, or you wanna bring it up a different day?
All right, give me a clerk issue again.
The um.
All right, so we're off the zoning now, we're going after something?
Going to the, um, about the positions and the timelines.
I'm lost.
When we talked about the positions available in the election and how long they're good for and.
Oh, 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 oh. Yeah, the um, zoning, I mean, the planning board positions, normally, five year elected. And they were staggered at one every year. Right now, we got nobody being elected this year, nobody being elected next year.
And why is that?
One, because when they went in, they should have gone in instead of five years, they should have gone in like four years. With, instead of lining two people up at once, one should have been a four year term, one should have been five year. And that, that should have happened two years ago. I mean, the only way we could, you get out of that is that when two people come up to be elected next time. One agrees to run for a four year, and one agrees to run for a five year, you know, without fighting over the whole damn thing.
Sure.
So that it it realigns itself, and it's, um. You know, it it would come out at that point. If we go back through trying to fight the damn thing, I think through, you know, the secretary of state's houses and everything, and what the town clerk did. I mean, you know, I just.
No, I think that's.
I don't, I don't think that's, you know, it it's just gonna go nowhere.
Does the board have authority to change its own terms?
No.
Members?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't really, but you know, that's one way to resolve the matter. Is what I'm suggesting, as long as everybody's on board, then the town clerk can go back to her boss. Who is the secretary of state, I don't know if you guys know that.
Yeah, no, of course, absolutely.
So, and and she can present that to the secretary of state, okay, this is how I'm gonna review this whole thing.
Well, it's a simple solution, as soon as you, as soon, as soon as you make, in my opinion, as soon as you make a decision that one will run for four, one will run for five, and you simply go to the clerk and say, this is what we'd like to do, tell us.
I'm up in sixteen.
Tell us how we can do it.
I'm seventeen.
You're seventeen, she's seventeen.
Right, this, this all happened because of people resigning and stuff. We have a similar thing with the board of health. I'm rerunning for three years, and Charlotte Parker is running with me this year for a two year position. Cuz she got appointed last year, no one took papers, so it does happen.
Yeah, of course.
But that's not why it happened.
And we know why it happened.
Yeah, but you don't know why it happened, and you know how it happened, what we're talking about. The um, another hi- history problem. So cut it short, do the Stone Bridge. Okay, the residents of Stone Bridge complained to the board of selectmen, the board of selectmen told us not to do the enforcement that was out there. And so, and then they found out, they spent a couple thousand dollars of the taxpayers' money, wrote it, wrote over to town council and asked them, how do we supersede the planning board's authority? And the town council answered, you can't, the planning board answered to the mass general laws, and you are not under their jurisdiction. So they said, okay, how do we put them under our jurisdiction? Well, we've removed them from being elected, so for the first municipality in the Commonwealth of three hundred and fifty and fifty years. Going backwards, um, they went and wrote an article to remove the planning board from voting, okay, to an appointed position. They were successful at a town meeting, then later overturned, and then in that, successful to overturn year and a half period, two members got appointed. But the problem that occurred was that they didn't appoint them for five years, they appointed them for three years. And although we, really throwing it out there, if you're gonna do this, you have to match the five year term. Well, they didn't listen to us in the first place, so.
Hold on, this could go on for the other side.
No, no, this is a rant I'm here.
Okay, so.
So.
Where are we now?
Okay, well, so it went into three.
Status update.
It went into three years.
Okay.
Okay, against everybody's saying, then, um, there was this whole thing to overturn it. It eventually got into the warrant, and then got overturned, and then there was that whole illegal warrant that it never should have got in there in the first place, but it still left us with the problem because of the posting of the warrant, and the article was actually changed after it was posted. And there was a whole mess with that, that really didn't go anywhere. Um, so, the correction is, once we got back to elected, okay, was the posts that were appointed. As they came up in rotation, the town clerk, when she publicized it, should have been for the remaining term. In other words, so if you're coming up for three years, then your elected post is for two years, and now you're back into a five year rotation. There was only two posts that that occurred to, she didn't, she listed them as five, which is the problem. So the, the problem was created by the clerk in the in the ballot, and so with the secretary of state, she can write a letter saying, we messed this up. Here's the correction, the people running for the office, I'm sure will not be having a problem with that. And then everybody's back into a five year rotation, if we do the, the one year versus the four year, it's really gonna mess things up for another couple of what do we say, twenty nineteen, before everybody gets back in?
You don't, you don't wanna, it's just if you can get the people to two in seventeen, one of them agrees, we're just run for a four year. Uh, uh, that will straighten out, the same in eighteen, that'll straighten out.
I might be able to settle everything, because I think I'm gonna retire in seventeen.
You think?
Yeah.
We only have three years to find a replacement.
Not if this project doesn't.
Yeah. So that's it in a nutshell, so that's how that happened, so the clerk has the authority to write to the secretary of state. Um, owning up to the, the issue at hand and suggesting a solution. However, the secretary of state may respond back that it's never happened in the Commonwealth before, because no one ever went from an elected board to an appointed board. Problem, so you've kinda created your own problem. Um, but he may bless us to fix it, and if so.
So maybe you can make it that suggestion and even put together.
Actually, it's not our authority.
No, no, but I understand that, but you can make that suggestion.
I think, you know, I.
Say, you can approach the clerk and make that suggestion.
We did.
If, if, um.
Do it again.
Well, we approached her before the ballot went out in the first place.
I think if the town clerk agrees to it, and I think the board of selectmen agree to it. I think at that point, town clerk can go back to the secretary of state. And then, you know, she's gonna get a ruling from the secretary of state, I mean, he might come back and say, tough cookies, and that's it, you know?
Doesn't hurt to approach.
No, I, exactly, that's why.
So who would do that on this board, who could approach?
What if somebody just resigns?
Yeah, I was gonna say, resignation could take care of it too.
Yeah, we, we don't think we'll do that. I mean, it's.
You see, we didn't create the problem, and we don't have the authority to fix it.
No, I understand that.
You know, I mean.
Pointed out.
It's okay.
I mean, at some point in time, you know, members are gonna say enough of this, you know, and that's it. But at the same time, you have to have continuity on a board like this.
Of course.
You should have continuity on a board of health. I mean, that thing's had so many members, it isn't funny, and that, that's a problematic situation.
If you have, either you or Bob would approach her and just say, this is what we think we'd like to do.
Well, it has to be her and Bob for one year and while in.
Yeah, maybe you may even wanna make that a vote of the board.
Yeah, we could do that.
Make a vote of the board, and then say, we voted this way, can you help us, you know, implement it with your boss? I would do that as soon as, you know, this is a suggestion, just to, just to get it fixed, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, and you know, we'll just, you know, pass that on. Yeah, I mean, and, you know, we'll just, you know, pass that on to the Board of Selectmen too, that you're gonna do, try to do this.
The clerk has the authority with, with her, with the Secretary of State, so if you voted as a board, and you have it in writing, saying, this is what we'd like to do, can you help us with it? Can you help us implement it?
I, I have a, uh, an issue with presenting to an elected official that we see a problem in the way that they're doing something, that they, they kinda created their own problem, or whatever the reason was, and maybe, and because it's never happened in the Commonwealth before, you can certainly have some sympathy with what do you do with this mess? But it is up to that elected official that deals with the Secretary of State to approach the Secretary of State and say, we have this problem.
Right.
It was created, how do I fix it? Not a suggestion from another board that has no authority whatsoever, okay, to go in and do it.
Well, if, if, I, we could get that done that way by simply, if we're in favor of having it done.
Because if the board is asking for help to fix something, and it can be done without them...
Then, you know, one of them, one of us can just go to the town clerk and ask her, okay, here's the next step on this. And I don't think she'd have a problem doing it.
Well...
I don't think she'd have a problem doing it at all.
I mean, if, if, if it's approached that way, there's no reason to bring up the reason why the condition exists, it's just that the condition does exist and we'd like to have it fixed.
The condition was brought up prior to, then it would be a problem.
I know, but that doesn't have to be mentioned in the delivery to the Secretary of State.
To the Secretary of State, well, yes, because they're gonna say, how did you do this?
Well, they might, they might ask that, they might not ask that.
Hey, see what I'm going with this?
I mean, she, she could be honest and say, well, I thought it should've been done that way, but...
You know, if people resign from boards and whatever, you could have, any board could have this problem, all of a sudden you have this dislocation, how do we fix it? I, to me, it would, I, to me, that would be my approach, it's just a suggestion, I'm just, I'm just speaking as a public member here.
I mean, if, if, if I was the first one up, I mean, I, well, I am the first one up in sixteen, but me doing anything doesn't do anything, it's really seventeen and eighteen is where the problem was.
Thing is, we've got, you know, I've got, we've got you guys that are doing a lot of good work for the town for many, many years, and you've got exciting projects, you've got people like Kathy and Andrea that are getting into the mill, so that someday, you know, we can take over all the good work that you've done, 'cause you're not gonna be doing this for a hundred years. And then you've got the squeaky wheel like me that'll kinda get, hopefully, people excited and interested in it, I mean, that's, I'm the least in the process. But we've got the people in place, let's get things done. I mean, this whole thing with the zoning board and the zoning law, it's all part of service, it's all just improving service to the public. You know, just better customer service, you know, getting, you know, people involved in a process so that we can better the service to our taxpayers, you know? And you guys, you guys, you guys, Bob and Bob and Wally and Jim, you got, and many other people in town, you guys have deep institutional history. I mean, you know the history, you've been doing some of this stuff for decades. We're clueless, I'm clueless, you know, so we need help to take over the reins, if you will. And so, you know, we thank you for your service, but, you know, let's get these things resolved, let's get on a track, 'cause now's the time, the time... I get a feeling every boardman, excuse me, every board meeting I've gone to, there's, there's an excitement out there, people sense a change and they wanna make good changes. People are talking to one another, it's unbelievable. The history blows my mind, I will tell you, I mean, I hear, I hear the problems from the past, it's just unbelievable. So dislocated, so much conflict, I don't get it, so, let's ignore it and move forward.
Well, I can certainly, and excuse me for looking for stuff while you were here, I was trying to find the actual piece of document. I found some of the stuff for you, but not all of it.
You made a good demonstration, you need a better filing system.
Well, funny you should say that, we actually had this office to ourselves, and then the Board of Selectmen decided in the previous to throw us out and put the select conservation in, and then took everything out and it made it very complex.
We should have a rule, never use the word previous anymore when we voted.
I'll, I'll strike that.
Do not use the word previous, strike that from the language.
So, we came in one week and everything was like in boxes filed to the ceiling, we're like, okay, what happened over the weekend? So, a whole nother board moved in with their stuff, so couldn't move in here for a while.
They even took our chairs and...
They did, they did, they took our nice chairs and like, this one's got a bolt missing on it right somewhere. But, but anyway, so I think that's just motion of the board, so we should approach again the clerk, identifying the election problem before the election.
Why don't I do that?
Okay. And then, um, and then get that corrected through the Secretary of State, because it was, you know, you can't really blame the clerk for something that never happened in the Commonwealth before. You know, and, and they may say wing it, but you know what, or they'll just bless anything, so... But it certainly was something that didn't need to happen, and I'm glad it got turned around, but we gotta correct it with that. Um, ecstatic that the ZBA is ready to rock and roll, we've got open space, ready to go, so all these projects that we've spent a lot of money in board members, I mean, I've got twenty-one years on, Jim's got like forty-something.
Nineteen ninety-four, I thought.
So he's right behind me, so we have quite a few decades, we've got over a hundred years of service here.
Nineteen sixty-eight.
So, we've got forty-something, forty-one.
But I was off.
Forty, twenty.
I was on the zoning board of appeals for twelve years.
Yeah, oh, I remember you mentioning that.
Twenty, between highway and everything?
Oh, yeah, twenty-one.
Yeah, that's where you're really fine.
You got, you got a hundred years of service between us four.
I, I know that, it's, it's...
That's amazing, I didn't know you did that much.
You know, and what you guys know and can do fifty years, a hundred years from now, who's gonna take over, that's what I worry about.
Well, that's constitutional memory, I mean, we have, I was just looking through that box, many a project has been corrected because of the constitutional memory.
Years ago, I mean, believe it or not, we used to, we used to have four people run for dog catcher.
Yeah.
Uh, today, I mean, you, you have to appoint a situation. We had the planning board where we had five members back in the mid-sixties, they went through the big brouhaha of stopping all the building that was going on, because we were building schools and our tax rate, it went from like five hundred to a thousand dollars within five years. Doesn't sound like much today, but take four thousand and, you know, make eight thousand out of it, and you'll know it's, it is something. But, at that point in time, it's because they'd gone through so much, those five members wanted out. And what, what they did at that point was, anybody that walked in there that seemed to have an interest, they got drafted. Made to sit down at every meeting for the next, believe it or not, some started five years, then four, then three, then two, till you had a whole new board. But they had knowledge in that period of time, going forward.
So this seat realignment, are you gonna approach it, or are you gonna vote it?
No, I'll, I'll approach it with, with her and, you know, and see what she says. If she's willing to go in and see what, you know, the Secretary of State says, yeah, she can do this in seventeen, eighteen, then we gotta come back and give volunteers a run for a four-year, that's all.
Well, what's, who actually ran, ran under that window?
Oh, God.
Did, did anyone, I mean...
Yeah, the, the ones that are seventeen and eighteen.
That are up in seventeen, seventeen. Okay, so, that's still three years out, so those shouldn't have been, so those should've expired sooner. So we should've had somebody up right now, right?
Yeah.
Who? Who's on, whose position was it? That's what's gonna get rewritten, yours.
Her, and then Bobby.
I was last year.
Yeah.
I ran.
So you should've been, you should've been two, so that's how that, so that's what's gonna happen, your term is gonna get reduced every two years.
Well, I don't think they're gonna do that, I think, that's why I'm saying you realign on seventeen and eighteen, that's all, one goes four, one goes five, and then you realign. The real problem is that they're not gonna go back, they're not gonna go, oops, wait a minute.
How hard is it to resign and then rerun?
Well, it's not a resignation and rerun. What it is, is that, what's gonna fix it is the little thing on the ballot that said five-year term, one says two, one says one.
But it could still say five if somebody resigned and then it would shift.
And then, well, no, then it won't shift it then either, because then, then actually, if somebody resigned, then on the realignment, that would come back to, one of them could be six months. You know, in a term, if you think about it, to realign.
Well, it, it's, it's six and one and a half a dozen years, it's gonna, it'll work, it'll work. It's just that she has to say yes, and then she has to contact the Secretary of State's office, and she's gonna get one of the...
You mean she as in the clerk?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, okay.
She's gonna get one of the assistant Secretary of State people, and they're gonna, they're gonna probably, I, my feeling is, it's happened elsewhere.
According to them at the time, it hasn't.
Well, we're pressing.
They said, most people, most people go from appointed to elected, not elected to appointed.
Yeah, that is bizarre.
That, they said it was the first of three hundred and fifty communities. So I'm glad it's over, but we still have to correct it on that, so, motion to have Jim take the lead on, uh, on, uh, approaching the subject with the clerk for corrections. Anyone wanna second that?
For God's sake, let me second it.
Yeah. All in favor, can I say nine?
Nine.
Nine, shall the vote unanimous? Okay, now, ZBA, do you have a copy of this?
I would like one, yes.
I presented.
Wonderful, thank you.
Bob said that there's a current one that he's gonna send out on the...
The most recent one Lisa had, whether or not it's more recent than that, yet we'll have to look.
But that's a pretty color one, so, um, you know, got a nice bounder, binder on it.
Yeah, it's got used to colors.
When, how do I go about, if, when I get a copy of one, the most updated one?
Right.
And I print it out, if I'm successful?
Right.
Okay. How do I go about making copies of this?
Okay, now, see that one she's got? That's got a later date on yours, and we actually paid, I believe, to have about forty of those printed up, 'cause they went to each ZBA member, the selectmen, and all the town boards when we were doing this last-minute brief to everybody look at it. So, there are a bunch of those running around, the last version that we have, obviously, has got the pretty colors on it, because it has the, where did it go in the book? You remember that whole fiasco for about six months, where, you know, they said, well, the old law was here and it had this number, and then it went over to there, where'd it go?
The staples, we have a town has an account.
Yeah.
They just walk in and say...
Well, no, you're gonna see me and you get the card.
Get the card, okay, alright.
I don't know how many you wanna...
I thought he was gonna answer the question.
Just give him the history.
Alright, um, well, let's, let's see what else we get, you know, that's all.
So...
I mean, we really haven't said anything to her.
Who's her, Lisa?
Lisa, to do another draft.
You see, that's, that's nine, that's ten, so we did.
This is May sixth, two thousand and ten?
Right.
Yeah, but that's, that's a current zoning bylaw, this is the proposed zoning.
It's got it, it doesn't have it in it? Some of the changes in there with the colors, that's what I was wondering about, 'cause that's pretty hefty.
Will you just wait till I get the most recent from Lisa?
Well, the email warrant, Bob.
Well, you're gonna look at your computer to see if you got it.
I haven't done anything in seven years, I think it'll all be done by next week.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, so this was going sideways.
What you do is, Bob will send...
We have levity here.
Thank you for your time.
You should've been here for that whole special article about where we're gonna put this stuff and where's the Dorito factory going.
I'm glad I missed that.
That was Comedy Central.
I'm glad I missed all that dirt too.
Oh, it was, no, it was just humor.
Humor, humor is the right word for you.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time and your tremendous service and...
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, it's very nice to meet you, thank you very much for what you're doing over there. It's a lot of work, we know.
Kathy, you're an attorney also, correct?
No.
Oh, you're not, I'm sorry, I thought you were.
What developer?
Oh, Danny's the attorney, yeah.
What developer you're from?
Burnett Properties, we do like commercial stuff, usually, yeah.
Okay.
So...
That's good, you have a great expertise and you, are you, who's chair?
Tom Coughlin.
Is it the guy from Maine?
Wakefield.
The Wakefield, thank you.
Yeah, Tom Wakefield.
I always wanna call him Coughlin, I don't know why.
He's a movie star, isn't he?
Is it? It's funny, every time I see him, I think of my son.
And, and it's a full board, right? You got a full, full membership with all, with all the alternates too.
Oh, good.
How cool is that?
No, that's really cool, well, that's you guys, so that's doing your homework, kudos to you.
New York Giants.
That's like this board, you have to learn so much, I mean, I...
Yeah, we're a three, we're a three-year school up here, that's why it's five years, that, that was our whole pitch too, when that mess happened, you need three years to school um, so you can really start, you know, throwing your expertise into stuff, I mean, you can sit there watching rubber sign, but, you know, to really follow and get going, because we have to interpret all the laws.
Right.
You guys are specializing in yours, but we gotta go learn them all, so that's why it's been a long school-up time. Oh, we like it, I mean, that's why we're here, not on your board.
That's good.
Everybody's got their expertise.
We're gonna walk on sand. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Bye-bye, nice to meet you.
On Salem Street, which was Sheehan's and Doc's property.
Okay.
He was going to bring in a conceptional and he didn't show up, so...
Who was it?
He's a different person, so I don't know his name.
Okay.
He was scheduled to come in.
Well, we talked to a guy at a dark, was gonna...
We talked to three different ones.
So...
It's not him, it's a different one.
It's a different, another different one, Jesus. Alright, no problem.
Craft check, said he wasn't ready yet, and I just got another bill from Woody County for a thousand to do some more work on craft check. Bob has, um, a holdup on the drainage that we discussed about how much water's gonna come off the property.
Yeah.
Into the drains out in the street.
Yeah.
I had suggested a bigger sump, and I need to look at that.
Yeah, Bob was talking about that, bigger sump or something, I did not, I have to, we have to see the plan too, we haven't seen a plan yet.
Craft check wasn't ready, so, what he does, we need to pick a date, and the open trails, uh...
Yeah.
Mike Davis and Alex wants to come in.
Come back in again?
The fifteenth is good, if we...
The same one we were talking about with the railroad bit?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess...
They had a meeting, Joe said, the other night, and they got two more scheduled hearings, I guess, or public meetings.
How'd it go, uh, at town, with, does that come up yet? The one in...
The butters at the elementary school, yeah.
Was that last night?
That was last night.
Okay, I, I was there.
You were at the meeting?
I was, I was there at the meeting briefly.
Yeah, and that's good, very pretty.
Yeah, there wasn't many people there.
But there were some butters who were sweating and...
Well, he needs, he needs to send out certified mail to all the butters. I, I can tell you that right now, I mean, it's, it's something...
Return receipt.
They don't seem to understand that, that, you know, if you don't do that, then somebody stands up at town meeting and says, hey, wait a minute.
Yeah.
You know what this is gonna do to me? Because the, the trail, and Bobby complained, in Salzburg, drove up wrecked on that one.
Andrea, in the subdivision rules book, there's a whole paragraph on proper way to, uh, send out the certified for a hearing, and it's legal and all the verbiage is in there, the timeframe and everything.
How's your foot?
Uh, it's healing.
Alright, the only other thing is what was in the mail, which was the Stonebridge, and, uh...
Oh, swimming pool.
Right.
Okay. Nobody's in for a swimming permit, yeah?
No, they have to go to the conservation.
Yeah, that's kind of us. I mean, it's nice to know, but, you know, there's no permit here, this is probably not for them.
Right, they're, the zoning and the conservation are trying to do what we've been trying to do for years, is to notify each board what's going on, and to look at it, and there's a thirty-day time period to get back to them with any problems. If you don't get back to them, they assume that it passed.
That's what this is.
Yes.
Well, you do it with the subdivisions.
Yeah, we do forty-five days.
Yeah, you'd be good on that.
Yeah, forty-five days. The trick is...
Is this a jet?
This is a polar, yeah.
Yeah, what's this one?
That was from March month on the summer street.
Okay, so, what they need is the seat, is the original plan on this lot with a circle, and that's what the circle's for, so if the swimming pool goes inside the circle, and if it fits inside the circle, then it's, you're golden, that's what that whole thing's about. That's why the, the circle has to be within the, the buildable area, contiguous buildable area, that's what that's for. So, but I don't see the circle. So...
No, it's not there, luckily, they're on sewer, so I don't have to worry about them putting over the septic system.
Yeah, nothing's, this isn't one of our plans, I mean, this is made for somebody else, but, um... Who made this plan? Warren Cameron, really Warren Cameron did this? They're the guys that did the subdivision. They didn't put their own stuff on? That's interesting. But this is Hancock.
Is there a cover letter in that? That was attached to that.
The topic is prepared for by, prepared for, I don't know.
Twenty-eight Stone Bridge. See, this is Hancock and Associates, but that, that's Morin's plan, so how do we get a Morin plan with, with a Hancock? And Morin did the whole subdivision, so he should've superimposed the whole thing on, so that's, that's strange.
Didn't he split off?
With Navy, yeah, but he still has the whole subdivision plan. If not, go get your own one.
All right, we need to, uh, decide on the date of our next meeting. Also, this is our last tape again, Walter, are you going to go up and buy supplies at Staples?
It's the last tape?
Yes, Jim got these. We've been asking, you said for the last two months, you were gonna go up there.
I'll go up, I'll do it. I'm, I just gotta see Nancy, I'll do it.
Just gonna do the, yeah.
Get a case, a case of them.
Actually, we need some more stuff with that too, so.
Line paper and whatever.
We just need a copy of the card.
My law papers.
I'll have Nancy, uh, set that, I think I'm gonna get that area mine.
They use a card.
They use a card, it is, it's a card, we used to have a copy of it, I'm, I'm.
Can you just order online?
No, you get Easy Accounting.
My secretary and the Board of Health uses her debit card and then turns a bill into Greg is what she does when she goes up.
Yeah, we don't do that, we just. So what's that? What are you looking at?
This is the, uh, expenses that we have.
So we're good.
Yeah.
I see twenty-seven, is that everything?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're good, okay.
But we were talking about using this to do the hearing, did you get, you got Bob's, uh, email?
I did, see, I got Bob's.
About not having to post everything.
Yeah, just put it in the library and email work.
Woody gave us the little book years ago.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
And I read that again.
The guide to zoning, it's a little brother.
What are we doing on the hearing?
We gotta come up with a date, I sent over for the advertising, so let's pick a, what's the town meeting date? Let's look at the calendars.
I think it's the twenty third.
Give me a month.
In the April, not.
April twenty-something.
April twenty what? Is it a Monday, twenty-first or twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, all right, so we gotta have the meeting. We can do it on the twenty-second.
That's our next meeting or?
No, that's, that's when we can hold it, okay.
We're doing April fifteenth, Ollie, for the, uh, trails and our next work, uh, planning board meeting. Not the hearing, but.
So it's gotta be the twenty-second.
We can't do them both on the same night?
Time.
Yeah.
Well, maybe.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, today's the what? Yeah, that should work, okay, so let's see if we can get them on four fifteen. Okay, so that'll go advertising the fourth and the seventh, that'll work.
All right, so I'm boasting the hearing for. Um, regular meeting and the, nah, not.
Yeah, the first and the, uh.
The hearing for.
Four fifteen, one, four, meeting. Okay, four, one, advertising, and, um, and seven. The last day prior to, yeah. Nope, seven days prior to, so that'd be eight. Okay, that's easy.
Jim, what is the refuse of Saturday?
Okay, so four fifteen on the next meeting then? Is that good?
It's all right, all right.
Okay.
My wife's birthday.
Which one?
Well.
Fifty.
We can make it twenty seconds.
It's all right.
On video.
I think we, we put that in as, because it's basically where we take all, you know, like the tree stuff. And, you know, bushes and grass and everything down above your yard.
You don't think that's?
That's because it's communal.
Okay, all right, all right.
It's not private.
All right.
Is that it?
We don't mention that.
Yeah, that's what I was like, remember, so.[1754.14]